Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the religion which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in it. Thank you, please be seated.
Done.
I got you. A little warm in this room. First item in the agenda is number 264, approval for the re-presicting from the 2020 census. We have our town clerk, Amy Warfield, to present on this. Amy?
Thank you Chairman Tigges. Just to recap, before, I've got a few slides to show you all. I want to thank the board for putting together the committee, which included Selectman Hogan and Chairman Tigges. Also included Bill Byer, his town moderator, Mark Woods, Cindy Phillips, and Scott Martin, who are town meeting members representing town meeting, and then myself. So, thank you very much for that. The other thing is, I would also like to thank Elizabeth Bonaventure from the Planning Department, and Tom Hayes from Engineering, who also helped me work on some of the GIS stuff. So, that was a very nice benefit, that we've got people like that who are knowledgeable and everything. So, let me just share this and show you kind of where we started, and what re-presicting involves. I've gotten lots of questions about, what is re-presicting, reapportionment, whatever. So, we start with looking at our map. This is the map of Burlington. And these are the numbers for... Just fit to here, okay. These were the part of the numbers that we got from the state at the end of the results of the 2020 federal census. Our total number for Burlington was 26,377 as of April 1st in 2020. So, that's the number that we work on. And then what we do is we take, there's the town. We take and look at what the distribution is, where the population densities are, and things like that. One interesting thing, that I think is interesting, that you may be aware of or notice, is that our most dense parts are this particular piece over here, which is where eight... Yes.
Village in Abra.
Yes, big, thank you, Abra, yeah, couldn't think of it. And then this piece here where Lord Baron is, and Hallmark Gardens, those types of things. Now, the things that are new from 10 years ago would be that this particular part here, which has the Tremont and Huntington apartments, and this particular part here, which is where Seven Springs is. 10 years ago, we didn't have all of that built out. So, that has, are two of the things that have kind of changed our population density. So, going from there, here is what the 2010 map looked like. So, 10 years ago, these were our precincts, precinct 1 through 7. And then, what we did is we took a look at that, and looked at where we needed to make changes, movements based in density and that kind of stuff. And there are basically five locations that we actually had to move the precinct lines. The one up here with between 6 and 1, one over here between 4 and 5, one down here between 1 and 2, and one here between 2 and 7, and then this particular location between 7 and 3. These were the five places that we needed to make movements and changes with the least amount of disruption to the voters in town. So, that's kind of where we worked from. So, what does that look like now? This is what the map looks like now, and you all have paper copies of that. It's a big, huge map, and I couldn't get it any smaller or any better, so that's why I just kind of printed it out for you. Let me just zoom in here a little bit. So... This is, we kept our same seven precincts, and we just moved a few, had to move a few of the lines based on those blocks that you saw on that first map, to be able to get our population numbers to balance. One of the things with re-presicting is the numbers that you can use. We can have no more than 4,000 population in a particular precinct, and the precincts have to be within 5% of the average number. So, the least number we could have in a precinct would be 3780, and the most we could have put in a precinct would have been 3956. So, we fit all of our numbers pretty much in the 3,700 population range. One thing, the one that's kind of the highest over is Precinct 7, and I'm satisfied with that only because Precinct 7 has been our hardest precinct to get town meeting members in. It's got a large transient population. It also has a lot of more spread out area. So, that will not probably be a problem going forward. So, that's kind of what we did, and what we're going to be doing going forward. And what we need tonight is just a vote by the board that this is okay, then this will be accepted and sent into the state. The state has a board that meets and has to approve all of the plans for each one of the towns. And if we can do this tonight, then I can send it to them. Somebody is coming tomorrow to pick it up, and we might get a vote on it on Wednesday. That's their next meeting of that particular board.
Thank you, Amy. Just to clarify too, there is a timing issue with this, like a deadline?
Yeah, the overall deadline is the end of October. They need to get it done in October. These go into effect on December 31st. And what happens is, once we, once all the towns get their precincts set up, the state can finish up their redistricting, which is what's going to be necessary for 2022, you know, federal offices and state offices.
Thank you, Amy. All right, I'll start with this thing, because Mr. Hogan was involved with the subcommittee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Amy, thank you for the education on this. And it's not, it's not as easy as looking at a map and just scooching a few lines around. There are reams of calculations, and to do the GIS was unbelievable, just to watch the information that was in there. Now, how many voters do we have?
We currently have about 1,723 as of January, I mean, September 1st. That's the last time I did a reading.
And after you took a look at everything you needed to look at, how many voters are actually moved from one precinct to another?
In total, it's about, let me see. One, two, about 300 and, about 350 voters will actually be moved from one precinct to another. Now, one of the other benefits we have, of course, is because we all vote in the same location, we never have to worry about the confusion that people have about showing up at the wrong, you know, voting location when it comes to be election time. And the other nice thing, a cost savings to the town, is anytime you move people, if their polling location changes, you have to notify them by mail. But because we're always, we're all at the high school, it's quite easy to, they find their place again.
All right, well, again, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan, Mr. Priest.
Thanks, Chairman. Amy, that partially answers my question. So, do we plan notifying these 300 some odd people?
We can do it in a mailing. We can actually do it through the census form, because on the census form, it gives their precinct number. The real thing that they want, we have to notify somebody for, is if their polling location changes, moves. But because, again, we're all in the high school, they, you know, it's kind of a mute point, but when we send out the census at the end of December, that new precinct number, well, precinct number's on everybody's census, so I'm going to highlight that, that, you know, there is, you may have changed censuses, and you may have changed precincts, and here's your new number. Just make sure when you come in, you know, we always, at election time, we always have that list over on the wall, and people, half the people can't remember, you know, what table do I go to? And so, we always do that anyway, so.
Yeah, yeah, no, just, you know, the effort, no one can talk to me apparently. You know, in an effort just to be more open with folks and keep them aware, if they are tracking their own precincts, that's awesome, so thank you.
And the other thing that's really nice is, if you ever wanted to know what precinct you're in, you don't even have to call us. If you go to the online map on the website, it's got all the housing information about your house and everything, but it also lists the precinct that you're in, because we get our maps ported into the AppGeo maps as well, so it's possible to find it, yeah.
That's great, I didn't know that.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Priest. Mr. Morandi?
Don't we have nothing, Amy, for a job? Thank you.
Mr. Runyon?
Thank you.
No, not at this time, thank you.
I just have a comment, tracking what Mr. Hogan said. The minutia of detail that goes into this is incredible. We're talking, some of the terminology you were using, like blocks, and it's just, it's overwhelming to me, but it was a great education. I know you guys did a great job, and I just want to commend your office for coming up with this to be as least disruptive as possible to the town. Thank you. Nothing further, I'll be looking for a motion to approve the re-presicting.
I'll make the motion that we accept and approve the redistricting as presented by Amy tonight at this time and date.
Second.
Okay, the movement seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? 5-0-0. Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
All right, item 265, approval for the 2022 health insurance rates. Want to do a brief intro?
Good evening, members of the Select Board, Mr. Chairman. I have with me this evening Benefits Administrator Christine Fiorez Nicola. What we have, what you have before you this evening is the health plan options for the employees and retirees. We just want to bring a few changes, nothing change of note by any means, but we do have a few changes, one of them related to the combined visits per year for habilitation. In the past, the, one of our programs had, it had to be 60 days in a row, which really isn't realistic. So, we brought it back in line with the other two programs we have. The other aspect of it, changes to the HSA. Based, right now, we refund their savings account, we invest into their savings account on a quarterly basis, and Christine had brought up the fact, as Christine talks to people about joining the HSA, depending upon the year, it really could have gotten hit with their covering the deductible without that H savings benefit. So, we're prorating that over the course of the year, per month. And we have an additional, given the difference in the premium of the HMO versus the HSA, we're doing a, the Insurance Advisory Committee, we've discussed that, and we're going to make a contribu, one-time contribution to single individuals, $300, into a family for $600, to try to balance out that differential in the premium, really try to even those off. I think it's safe to say Christine has seen more activity in the HSA accounts?
Most definitely. I think a lot of our employees that are aging in, turning 26, coming off of their parents' plans, are definitely looking at that health savings account. It's a way of investing in the future. Many of them don't really ever use many of their services except for routine services, so the money that goes into the health savings, they keep with them as well, rolls each year. So, it's very much a great investment for them.
Those are the changes we've made. We've reviewed the policies in the premiums with the Insurance Advisory Committee. I've met twice with them, went over that. The recommendation, what you have this evening on the sheet A, no, excuse me, sheet B, is the suggested premiums for active employees, and we're suggesting a 0% increase over the, for the next fiscal, for the calendar year, these are on calendar years, not fiscal year. And C is the changes to the retiree, the medex plans. That, we really don't have much of a decision. Basically, we're being told by Blue Cross, Harvard, and Tufts, where we, what their increase is going to be for the following, for the following year. When we mailed this out to you the other day, we had a estimated, on the Medicare, the bottom two, the Tufts, 3% in four. They came in late Friday. The Tufts Preferred HMO is basically 4.4%, and the Tufts Preferred Settlement is about, supplement is 3%. We don't have many people in the HMO, we have about seven people, so it doesn't affect many. The goal this year was to look hard at our costs, and what we've done for, as being self-insured, what we felt we could, as a community, absorb if there are any changes. We've increased the fund this year with a 2% increase from this current year, and we feel 0% is appropriate for 2022. I should note, it's not on the agenda for this evening, on the dental insurance. Christine had a hard bargain with our existing carrier and our consultant, we're looking at probably a 5%, a little over 5% decrease on those premiums. That is 100% employee paid. So, what I'm looking forward, looking towards the board doing, taking action on tonight, is voting on the proposed health premiums for both the active and retirees for calendar year 2022.
Thank you, Mr. Genio. I'll start at this end. Mr. Runyon, any comments, questions?
Yeah, just, I mean, 0% increase for active, I mean, that's pretty remarkable, it's unheard of, actually, so, good news there. I just, that's really the only thing that caught my eye, Gary, but good job all around. Thank you.
Mr. Morandi?
No, just like that. Very, what Mike said, I mean, you're presenting a pretty, pretty job to you and your staff for that. Thank you.
Mr. Priest?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Gary, do we offer any kind of incentive-based programs through the carriers that might allow folks to get money back, like, you know, if they exercise, improve weight loss, or anything of that kind?
We have the, you want to talk about the diabetes program?
Sure, sure, we have a couple different things. So, under both Harvard and Blue Cross, they offer the $150 toward fitness for families each year. On the Medicare plans, we actually have $150 toward each person, which is nice, because Medicare views everyone individually, so that's worked out well. We also offer a diabetes program through Good Health Gateway, that, of course, we don't know about the employees that are involved because of HIPAA and all of those things, but they're able to, if they have a diabetic condition, they're able to use this program to be able to get, you know, free medicines, free Lancets, free test strips. They just have to meet certain requirements, really just going to the doctor and getting their normal checkups. So, we're always trying to make sure that people are getting their normal, their routine done, because I think, especially over these last couple of years, it's been very hard for people to get into their doctors. So, we're trying to make sure that we incentivize people to make sure that they're, making sure that they're looking at their routine health as well.
Awesome.
We also have the prescriptions program from...
Canada, the Canada Rx program as well. So, there's certain maintenance drugs that employees are able to get free of charge through Canada Rx. There's a list online for both Blue Cross and Harvard. We do try to promote that as much as we can, and we do have employees that utilize that as well.
That's great. Awesome. I mean, thank you both for keeping this at 0% this year. I know with everyone going through everything, a non-increase is great news, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Priest. Mr. Hogan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is important stuff to an awful lot of people who are working for the town or retired. I almost had a heart attack after I looked at what the bill would have been after my cardiac surgery last year. That was a, that was a deal breaker as far as, you know, whether I could have stayed in my house, whether we would have had to sell it, I mean, it was just a huge, huge number. So, thank you guys for working on this and making us feel comfortable with it's in good hands.
Not quite welcome. Christine and Jen Ryan from our office do a lot of work on the benefits for the employees and retirees especially, who have a lot of questions. They probably get more questions from the retirees, so.
If you have a bunch of retirees that have questions, just come to a Selectmen's meeting. I think it's kind of ironic, Mike, that we retire and they get 0% increases and we get stuck.
Interesting, yeah.
Anyway.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Mr. Denizio?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to add, because I know if Mr. Sagarino was here, he would do it, and just point out that that Insurance Advisory Committee, that also consists of the presidents of our labor union throughout the whole town and school, you know, deserves a lot of credit. I know Gary, you know, praised them a little bit, and we would like to praise him and Christine for their leadership of that, but they do do a lot of work, and they get down into the details, and they are so knowledgeable about this stuff. I'm sure anybody that's worked here knows that they're trying, they're out there trying to educate people on everything, on the HSA, and that's why we have more activity in it, is because of education and education, and that's what they do, when they're out there, and they're talking to young people about high deductible plans, which saves them money, saves us money. So, they do work hard, not just at the, a couple times a year when we meet and have to come here to get approvals, but also throughout the year too. So, I just want to make sure we...
Thank you, Mr. Denizio. There's nothing further from the board, we're looking for a motion to approve the 2022 health insurance rates? It's moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? 5-0-0. Thank you.
Thank you, members of the board. I appreciate being on before 9:30 in the evening.
0% increase, that, you'll get it every time.
Okay, item number 266, approval for a one-day liquor license for beer garden. We have our Economic Development Officer here to present. So, take it away.
Hi, good evening, thank you for having me. Also with me is Christine Haley with Crafted. She's online. Again, my name is Melissa Tantaklis, I work as the Economic Development Director for the Town of Burlington. And this request here is for the one-day liquor license for the beer gardening, that's celebrating the opening of a pocket park in the town center. And as many of you already know, one of the main initiatives out of the Economic Development Office was really to enliven and activate the town center, to support our small businesses. Many of the businesses in this area are independent immigrant-owned businesses, and it's a really kind of neat texture to our community, in the sense that, you know, it's less, you know, less corporate, less, you know, there's the other side of Burlington, and then this neighborhood-serving side of Burlington, and we have a lot of opportunity to grow this area over time. But, in the meantime, as of today, what we're trying to do is activate it. You know, I'm working with the property owner and some of the adjacent businesses to rethink some of the underutilized spaces there. And as you can see on the screen in front of you here, one area, as we talked about a couple weeks ago, is what we're calling a pocket park. There's four parking spaces that'll be converted for a temporary period of time into people's spaces. And these people's spaces really allow people to kind of, you know, foster some of the civic engagement, create fresh interest in the area, and offer just new opportunities in the town center. But beyond that, we'd like to host an event, and that is the one-day Business Open House and Beer Garden event. And I will kind of turn it over to Christine to talk a little bit more, since the request is about the license itself, how the operation for the event would kind of play out as we have proposed it.
Thank you, Melissa. Christine, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, yes, we can.
Wonderful. I'm Christine Haley, I'm the founder of Crafted Company. We are a Boston-based craft beer events company, so we have thrown plenty of craft beer festivals, worked with the Mass Brewers Guild on their large craft beer festivals, and have done similar beer gardens to this. On the screen, we have a rough map of the layout. We did a walkthrough of the space last week, I believe it was, and came up with this setup. As you can see, and I can also show a photo of the space as it looks now, with the turf down and the parking spots, but we have, to block off the roads, we have Jersey barriers or large vehicles. I know that was a concern, just if people were, that's their normal route to go through Moore and Ave, and maybe their pedestrian fencing wasn't going to be quite enough to alert them, then we would have the Jersey barriers or large vehicles to really provide an extra barrier in those case, in those spaces. The lighter blue, we are going to do pedestrian fencing or sawhorse barriers to enclose the rest of the space, so that there's no open space where people could come in from different entrance points. That bright pink dot, that would be our entrance, where we would have a security team there checking everyone's IDs and giving them a wristband if they are able to purchase beer. A bright green wristband, that wristband will need to be shown anytime somebody comes up to the bar to purchase a beer. And then, also in the back with the purple area, we'll be bringing in portable restrooms, and then the orange area is where we will have a bar set up. In terms of how this sort of purchasing will go for the beer, everyone will be on a purchase-as-you-go basis, so there's no admittance fee to the event. Instead, there'll be a cost for each beer. Like I mentioned, security staff will be checking IDs and giving the wristbands up at the front, and then, of course, the bartenders will have tip-certified, fully insured bartenders who will be serving the beer. People who are going ahead to purchase beer will have to show their wristband. If anyone has any questions about, you know, how valid their wristband is, or anything of that nature, bartenders will be encouraged to then go ahead and check the ID again if they feel the need to do that. One other point I wanted to mention, minors that are allowed to come into the space will not receive any wristband, of course. They will have to be accompanied by an adult with them to enter into the beer garden area. And I think that is the main sort of rundown of the beer service protocol. As I mentioned, we'll have a security team, we've contracted with Advanced Protection Services in the past. They do a wonderful job of not only sort of maintaining the entrance to the event, doing the ID check, all of that, but then they also have their staff floating around the beer garden space, just to make sure that, one, nobody is trying to come in from any other points from the fencing or anything along those lines. They also do a great job if, you know, anyone needed to be asked to leave, or if anyone needs to be encouraged to have water or anything of that nature, they do a great job helping diffuse any of those sorts of situations. Again, this is a family-friendly event happening from noon to 6, midday event. I don't foresee any issues with that, but they are there, of course, if anything arises. The other elements, of course, nobody can bring any alcohol into the space or leave with their beer. People can bring in water bottles, but those either have to be sealed, or they have to be an empty sort of Nalgene bottle or something along those lines, an empty reusable bottle.
Yeah. Christine? Maybe we could pause at this moment and see if there are further questions?
Absolutely.
Chairman Tigges?
Okay, thank you, Christine, thank you, Melissa. I'll stand up to the subcommittee, alcohol subcommittee, Mr. Hogan?
No, I don't have any questions right now, and I don't want to ask questions that I already know the answer to at the moment, so I'll let some of the others go ahead, and then I can jump in again.
Thank you, Mr. Morandi?
No, I apologize for not being here the other day, but I get tired of my elder father.
Mr. Priest?
Why don't I go first, I have a bunch of questions.
Really?
I'm sort of shocking.
Mr. Runyon?
Actually, I was along for the, for the...
Actually, I was along for the walkthrough the other day, so a lot of my questions were answered. The only thing, going over the application here, did we agree to have a rain date or no? Are we going rain or shine? Only because it only lists the one date on the application here.
Oh, good point. We, on the walkthrough, we did talk about having a Sunday as, the following day, Sunday as a rain date. Would we have to include that in the application, correct?
I think we could include that in an approval. I don't think it has to be on the application.
Okay.
Re-invent the wheel here, I think, if you want to add.
Yeah, we would like to include a Sunday, the following day, as a rain delay.
Mr. Priest?
Thanks, Chairman. Okay. Will there be police there?
We've talked to police and they recommended a detail, one.
One officer, okay, great. And we're all set with blocking the road? We've talked to all private property owners involved and the state D O T?
Moran would be the only road that's closed. That's a private way. And Mike Murray's been involved in the process, and he said, yes, that would be fine, and he would notify his tenants.
Great. How many bartenders and staff will be there?
Christine, could you answer that?
The plan is to have at least two bartenders. I think two will be sufficient. We have the option to add a third if we think we need to do that. And then additional staff. I'm going to walk the space with the security team tomorrow. I would imagine that they'll probably have three security staff.
And all tenants in the area have been notified, obviously, at the event. That way, they're expecting the influx of vehicles and traffic and all that?
Yes.
In terms of advertising, how are we getting the word out?
Our advertising was going to be mostly social media. We have a Facebook event that's planned for it. It's all really contingent on the approval from this meeting.
And then just in terms of survey feedback, you have a Q R code or something on site that we can get people to respond to?
That is in our notes from our last conversation. It hasn't been developed yet, but we will include that.
Okay. And then was there anything that came of the barrier art for the Jersey barriers? Are those being painted? Are they being left? How are we doing that?
They're planned to be painted the same color as the walls at this point. And the idea was to engage with the school, the high school, to do kind of hand finger paints. But we wanted to create an event with that. So that's still a work in progress, possibly with the library, possibly with the high school.
Awesome. I mean, I fully support this. I think it's a great idea. I hope that it's a huge hit. So, I mean, that's where I stand. I just have a bunch of questions.
Thank you, Mr. Priest. Just a question, a couple of questions. Did you, did I hear you say you're doing a walkthrough tomorrow with the security staff?
So we did a walkthrough last week, police, town administration, the select board representatives, and one planning board representative was walked through.
So my only question is, the area of Moran Ave where it meets the fence by the dumpster, is that going to be completely blocked or will cars be able to sneak through and go behind the building? Or can that be looked at as far as, in other words, you see that little area between the blue line and the dumpster?
The diagonal light blue line?
Yeah. Sneak through there or?
Well, I don't, if I may, Mr. Chairman, Melissa, correct me, that was mostly for delivery of trucks for the businesses along that path. What they're going to do, if there's any cars moving around out back, they're going to be sent out to Skilton Lane to Cambridge.
I just don't want it wide enough so people would come down and see the barriers and try to sneak behind the buildings where they're not supposed to be.
Because it's a period of six hours and some, most of the deliveries are in the morning, Mike Murray has suggested that that just be closed off so we can ensure that, that there's no vehicles going down there. And as I mentioned, he was planning to, you know, kind of reinforce that with his tenants.
I feel more comfortable with that being closed off because those businesses typically don't have vehicles driving behind the building. And they have doors out back. And if they just open the door and walk out, like to go to the dumpster, they're not expecting to see traffic. So I prefer that, that, that area to be blocked off to traffic as well. That's it for me. No other questions?
Yeah, I have a couple just about it. Either of you, could you do a very quick summary of any of the businesses that are going to be involved in doing something that day? And, you know, to try to bring interest to their business?
At this point, Sweet Ginger's discussed having a narrow sidewalk table. We talked to the Board of Health, and that is unacceptable because they're close enough to the entryway that they could do, sell some appetizers or something. It hasn't been fully vetted out or formed yet in terms of what they'd be selling. Pizza Works and True North have also said they would start thinking of a menu, kind of something bite-sized or something like, you know, slices to go or something that could be taken out. Because the idea is that we would create a map with all the businesses who have food in the area and encourage people to get food and bring it into the beer garden. We're not providing food or food trucks.
And Christine, the event is from twelve to six. Is there a last call moment prior to six o'clock when people know they can get one more drink or something?
Typically, we do something like that about a half hour before close. So I would say we'd probably do that around five thirty. My experience, it's sometimes better not to make a big deal out of any sort of last call, but sort of let people know, you know, not ring a bell or anything, just for people to rush to get a final beverage. But just sort of subtly let people know that.
Thank you. It's almost.
Anything further? All right. Yes, Mr. Murray.
In Burlington, you're not allowed to have beer unless you have food. How are we getting around that?
That hasn't come up just now.
I had a couple restaurants on my backside about that. So I told them I'd bring it up, and I've been sitting here all night debating whether or not I was going to bring it up. So something to think about. I brought it up and I'm over it.
I would say, Mr. Chairman, I would say the other, the restaurants that are participating are.
Because of that one spot, I'm talking about some of the other restaurants I found that are pretty upset about it.
Well, this is the only spot it's located.
I'm just asking a question. How are they getting around the fact of not having food, having beer?
Well, again, the restaurants, True North.
From different restaurants.
Yeah, Sweet Ginger, the pizza place, they're, they're going to be distributing and selling food. So there'll be food at the, at the garden? Yeah, the food from the restaurants in that area.
Right. So the idea was to encourage people to go to the businesses in the town center and then bring it to the beer garden so that those kind of nearby would benefit. So the idea is that we're trying to activate town center businesses. Now, if we, yes, if there is an interest in exploring, this is kind of a pilot, if you will. If there's interest in exploring in other locations in town, we could kind of do that, you know, going forward. I think this was a proof of concept, if we could lay something out that brings in people and then encourages them to shop in our town center businesses.
Thank you, Melissa. Mr. Denizio?
I just wanted to bring, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was just going to bring up that, I think because it's a one-day event, that it doesn't have the same regulation, but we can verify that.
All right.
Okay.
All right. So Melissa, will you and John work that out or?
Yes, thank you. Thanks for bringing that to our attention.
I'm sorry I had to, but.
Thank you. Okay, anything further? All right, nothing further? I'll be looking for a motion to approve the one-day liquor license for the beer garden.
I will make that motion with the caveat that Melissa and John rectify Joe's question and clarify it.
And a rain date too.
And the rain date to Sunday, the twenty-fourth.
All right, so the motion's been made.
Seconded.
All right, seconded. Which to include, the rain date and clarification on the food one-day liquor license? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, five zero zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael, do you want to take the next one or John?
What's that?
Do you want to take the next one or John?
Just a refinance, pretty straightforward.
John?
Yeah, good, John.
All right. Okay, next item on the agenda is two sixty-seven. It's approval for an affordable housing refinance request. Mr. Denizio?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I think the board has done in the past several times, one of our affordable units is looking to do a refinance. And because of a deed rider that exists on the property, they need the approval of the board. Paperwork has been submitted to our affordable housing coordinator, who has reviewed it. And the paperwork was found to be in order and within the allowable parameters. And suggests that the refi be approved.
Thank you, Mr. Denizio. I'll start on this end with Mr. Runyon.
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray?
No questions.
Mr. Priest?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one. It might be a stupid question, so bear with me. Do we, are we required to know what the refi is for? Or are they just allowed to take the refi out as long as it isn't the rent?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Denizio?
Thank you. Nick, I'm not sure I understand the exact question. Do you mean for the amount of money or exactly what they're going to use the money for?
The intent of the.
I'm not sure that we know that, Nick, that.
No, I saw that.
Isn't in the paperwork.
Okay. I wasn't sure. That's why I wanted to ask. Okay? No other questions?
Okay, Mr. Hogan?
Nope. The fact that it was brought to our attention's a good thing, so that's all I care about.
Okay, I have no comment or question on it. That being said, I'll take a motion to approve item two sixty-seven, the affordable housing refinance request.
So moved, seconded.
Moved in second. Any of all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, five zero zero. Item two sixty-eight is approval for a five K and a town use, town common use and town common light poles. I believe we approved one of these already. No, we did, right?
Well, just for one tree.
So.
Mr. Denizio?
At the last meeting, we approved it for one tree. Somebody asked for us to get for the poles, the request was to do the light poles in the same color.
Okay.
So it is the five K plus the light.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Denizio. We have someone from Sahili here.
Hi, yeah, I'm here.
Okay, Christine, Christine Schruen's here as well.
Yeah, hi, I'm Raina Tibari. I'm the co-executive director in Sahili. So as we already know, I needed a tree. Actually, we look for a tree. So I just want to talk about Sahili first. You know, we are domestic violence and sexual assault organization here in Sahili for twenty-five years. This is the first time, so we are a little more overwhelmed and excited. So we had, we are having a walk for, for the domestic violence awareness. And that's taking place from the Burlington Town Common. And the tree also, as you already said, it's like that already I have the permission to, you know, the light is there. But I also want the permission that can be decorate it in purple ribbons because it signifies the domestic violence awareness. We are also having some events in the library and the children are making some, some sort of like painting and drawings. And I want to decorate the tree with that because it's like, it should be, a whole community should be knowing about domestic violence. So if, if, if you all agree, give us the permission to decorate the tree, it'll be great. And the walk is happening on twenty-third. And that walk starts from the commons and we walk ended for five, five K. And then I will have taken permission from, from the officer, the chief Brown. So he, the police already knows about it. So, and then we are just serving waters and that's, and maybe some protein bars.
Thank you. Christine, did you want to chime in on this?
I certainly support the, this organization and the, they're looking to, that they're seeking approval for. And I'm sorry, it was out of the country last week, so I didn't get to listen to the meeting last week. But I'm assuming the, the lighting up the lights on the common was also a part of that approval or not? I'd like that piece in the mix as well.
Thank you. I'll start on this side. Mr. Hogan?
No, I have nothing.
Mr. Priest?
My only concern is the ribbons and how we do that. I mean, the lights I'm fine with, the event I'm fine with. The ribbons on the tree, I assume that we'd have to have Rick or manage somebody deal with that. Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Wouldn't that have to do with the lights too? When they put the lights up, the ribbons up?
The lights are pole lights, so I don't know, I mean.
All the pole lights?
Whereas the ribbons going on the tree was the request, so I just want to clarify. If they want to put ribbon on the pole, that's a lot easier. I mean, I'd be fine with that.
Sorry, I'm interrupting here. So there is already a tree which has, it's already lighted. It's only you, one has to put the film on it, the purple color, so it can be lit. So we had walked on the, in the commons and then this, already know the tree which is already lighted. It's only needs a purple film on it. So then it's lighted.
So just, I mean, is one tree that's going to ever?
There's only one tree, just one tree. Because it's just like, you know, everybody knows about the awareness, like the domestic violence. It's like, it's important that we talk about it and, you know, it's like, otherwise, no one knows about this, such a horrific issues we have. And it's good that we are making it prominent and talk about it. So people can signify and say.
Okay, yeah, that's great. All right, Mr. Runyon?
Actually, Christine, is this in conjunction with, do you do something every year about this time with colored lights or something?
Yeah, in the past, we've done it. We've had a vigil that we've gone from sixty-one Center Street to the police station. And the police station used to have the purple lights out front. This year, they're expanding what they're doing with respect to domestic violence month, if you could, and the three events that they've talked about, the walk being a new one that they're adding to this.
Okay, so this just coincides with Youth and Family Services, that's in that, in that area? Okay, great, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Runyon. I just want to acknowledge my past experiences working with Sahili. They're a great organization. It's an organization you don't hear about unless you need them. But believe me, if you need them, they're there. They're an asset to the, not only Burlington, but the surrounding towns. They're involved in many, many areas, you know, different areas. They run the Leahy Domestic Violence Initiative. So thanks Sahili for all your work. Mr. Murray had to step out. Anything further? If there's nothing further, I'll be looking for approval for the five K. Actually, one quick question. I assume no rain date?
I assume you're definitely going to do that. Tell the whole community that we are having a rain day. So it's like, we'll keep the day and see how it goes. It's very hard how to connect with everybody who has already registered to walk with us. So people are traveling from different places also. So that becomes a little harder. So we don't have any rain day.
Thank you. Lieutenant McDavid has organized numerous five Ks in the past, and he's going to be running this one as well.
Typically, they're rain or shine, the walk.
That's what I figured. That's what I wanted to ask though. All right, that being said, I'll be looking for approval for the five K and town common use and town common light poles for the Sahili.
So moved. One question, what are the times on this?
All right, it looks like nine thirty to one thirty. Okay, all right, very good, thank you.
Okay, so Mr. Priest, I move in seconded. Any of all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, four zero zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want one question here. Can I put the? Ribbons, we can put the ribbons around the tree or not?
Yeah, we just, we just approved it.
Okay, thank you so much. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, we just nominated you to run the five K, Mr. Murray, in your absence.
I'll get my truck and I'll be right there.
Okay. Next item is, we're going to continue a public hearing, two sixty-nine. It's a continued all alcohol license, liquor license for Del Frisco's, ninety-two mils, extreme bike. So we'll be looking to move that, continue that to November?
Have we heard what's going on?
All right. Hold on, Mr. Denizio?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So just a quick update. I know that the extending this again is not going to make everybody happy. We did get an update this week from the attorneys for the property owners saying that a tenant is eminent and needed some direction on a license transfer. So that's why the recommendation was to continue it one more time and see if we can finally get.
I like the way you talk. One more time. Okay, thank you, Mr. Denizio.
But the last time, I would imagine that we'd have a discussion next time about doing something.
something. Because we were very generous in giving over time.
It started, what, two years ago? Okay. Mr. Priest?
I, yeah, I just, I mean, you know, the word eminent's been used quite a few times in the last year. It feels like. So, I mean, I'm happy to extend it to November, but I think at that point we'll be having, you know, a conversation.
Mr. Morandi?
Well, Mr. Hogan said it all.
Okay, Mr. Runyon?
I guess my only comment would be I, we check with Attorney Devlin and ask him, you know, will you be ready to go in November? Right here, the backup says October 25th. So is November going to give enough time? Or do they need, need to begin in November, first of December?
I think it gives us enough time.
I mean, it continues to be on the agenda every...
It does say October. What do we want to do?
So we have one more meeting in October.
And that's what it says on the application, is October 25th.
All right.
Are they going to be ready to go? Lynn, do you know by...
You can go to November 8th.
Huh?
You can go to November 8th.
All right. Can we reach out to Attorney Devlin and let him know that we want to wrap this up one way or the other?
Why don't we give him the benefit of the doubt then and go to that first meeting in November?
November 8th. So, we'll be looking for a motion, I'm going to use these words loosely, to one more continuance to November 8th, if anybody wants to make that motion.
He'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
One second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
I, five zero zero. Anybody opposed? I'm sorry, I got caught up. And then...
Oh, I'm sorry. No, okay, go ahead.
All those in favor continuing to November 8th?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. Five zero zero. Please let Mr. Devlin know that we want to see him soon. Okay. We have a continued public hearing, item 270, on the all alcohol Basido Restaurant, Burlington LLC. Anybody presenting on this?
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, Mr. Dinesio?
Item 270 is to be continued, I believe Attorney Vaughn is here for item 271.
Oh, okay.
Correct.
Yeah, this is 270.
Both of them to some degree. They're related, obviously, but yeah.
So would we...
Do 271 first?
Are we just going to continue 270? I think so, right?
I think so. Mr. Hogan's suggestion might make sense that you said 271 first.
All right, then we'll take item 271 out of order. And we need a motion to open a public hearing for a transfer of all alcohol license to Rosa Mexicano Burlington from Basido Burlington Mall. Motion to open by Mr. Morandi.
Thank you.
Second, open the public, aye. Been moved in second to open the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose abstaining. Five zero zero to open the public hearing. Vaughn?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Pleased to be before you for the record Attorney Mark Vaughn, representing the applicant, Rosa Mexicano Burlington LLC, connection with the liquor license application that's been made. With me is Greg Sherman, who is Regional Director of Operations for Rosa Mexicano, and very excited about having the opportunity to become part of the Burlington community here. But Rosa Mexicano, excuse me, is a full-service restaurant that specializes in regionally-inspired Mexican cuisine. They are looking to occupy the space most recently formerly occupied by Basido Restaurant at the Burlington Mall. Rosa Mexicano has extensive experience in the restaurant industry. They have several locations in eastern United States, New England area primarily, but they have one other location in Massachusetts, that being at the Seaport. So this would be their only second location in Massachusetts. And I know that they're very excited about locating at the mall. So they're basically looking to take over the exact space that Basido operated from. I did hand out some materials just now that I think are consistent with what we submitted in the application as well. I thought it might be helpful to have some larger versions of it. But you can see that they're taking over the Basido space. One change that they are going to have is they're incorporating a, an outdoor patio seating area that would be at the front with 36 seats at that area. But the seating inside is going to be very consistent with what Basido had in terms of the number of seats. So we have had our special permit hearing with the planning board for a new restaurant, which obviously requires a new special permit. That was approved by the planning board and we have submitted this liquor license transfer application for Rosa Mexicano at this location. So this was filed as a transfer application of the Basido liquor license as Rosa is looking to occupy the same exact space which Basido occupied. Therefore, the liquor license wouldn't be moved from the current location where the license is designated. Very similar, identical, if you recall, to what happened about a year and a half ago, I think, with Uno's Restaurant on the other side of the mall where Uno's transferred that liquor license to Karma Restaurant, which stayed in the same location. So I know, obviously, there was a transfer that had been submitted previously for Fogo that was going to be in another location at the mall. That was not done as a transfer. They ended up filing a site-specific license. But in this particular instance, since it is the same location and the same license designation, that's why the transfer was filed. So if I could, I'd like to maybe just introduce Greg to speak briefly to the board. Greg has a lot of experience in the restaurant industry and notably before his tenure with Rosa Mexicano, actually had a long tenure here at Paparazzi when they operated on Wall Street. So very familiar with Burlington liquor license rules and regulations and operations of the town, so.
Yeah, thank you. And thanks for having us. So I've been, I've been in this industry about 19 years. I live in Ashwa. I'm the Vice President of Operations for Rosa, going back about eight and a half years now. And we just, you know, and before that, like you said, you know, I've spent a long time in Burlington. My wife works at Leahy Overnight X-Ray. So, you know, I know the town, I understand how it works. And it was always a goal for me to get back into Burlington after leaving Paparazzi to go to the Seaport and ran the Seaport Restaurants General Manager for a couple of years before taking on a larger role within the brand. Heading into COVID, you know, we were riding high and just, just at the brink of an expansion period for us, then COVID hit. And we closed down all 14 restaurants and kind of reevaluated who we were as a brand. And luckily, Boston Seaport survived and a couple of our restaurants, Manhattan survived, National Harbor survived, and Riverside Square, New Jersey survived. And unfortunately, we had to close nine other locations. Now, we're sitting at a different point and we've kind of restructured and reinvested in who we are. We did sign this lease in Burlington. We also signed one in North Hartford, Connecticut. We also signed one Pentagon City, DC, one in Ardmore, Pennsylvania. And we just opened a restaurant two weeks ago in Manhattan on the Lower East Side where our original restaurant was opened up in 1984. So we're excited about where we're going. We are, you know, as mentioned, we're not your typical Tex Mex, Mexican restaurant. We are someone who tries to be the very best part of someone's day. We do serve alcohol, but at a different level. It's a, you know, it's the more ins of Mexican food. You know, we try to set ourselves apart. We are excited to go into Burlington. The opportunity of that space and what it is is really unique. We're not doing a lot of cosmetic stuff inside, just kind of giving it a facelift. Outdoor dining has become a different level prior to COVID than that it will be moving forward. So we're excited about the special permit that allows us to extend that patio in a safe way that makes people feel special. And that's, you know, that's kind of where we're at with that.
Thank you, gentlemen. Before we open up to the subcommittee and the rest of the board, just want the board to know that we do have town council here if there's any questions. That being said, I'll open up Mr. Morandi. You and Mr. Hogan are the subcommittee?
So at the last meeting, I asked, because I believe we've got a town council, so I'd like to hear from him first. Talk to a site-specific.
Do you have a specific question?
Yes, site-specific. Does that, I like the license that they tried to transfer. Is that, was that the one that, it's a town license. Do they want to use it at that spot? Does it have to be used at that spot?
Do you stay there?
That was the question.
Just identify yourself, sir.
Yeah, sure. Brian Winter, Town Council's office. Let me just make sure I understand your question.
So the license, the license that was at Basido's is basically a town license?
Yeah.
A town liquor license. They have other licenses that they can use. How do I say this? Help me, I'm trying. Are they, are they trying, are you trying to use that specific license for that specific spot? That's what, I think that was my question to you. Or can they use a different license for that spot?
Yeah, so Mr...
So, yeah, maybe I can rephrase it and answer it as best as I can. So what I just heard from the applicant is that they would like to use the existing license and transfer it to the same spot. Now, I did see from the paperwork and from a little bit of the presentation that it's not 100%, you know, overlap the same spot. Might be a little change. In fact, they noted that in the application, that there is a little bit of a change at the premises. So that's, I think, the first half of your question. The second half is, can you apply a new license for the same spot? And no, you can't have two licenses for the same spot.
The question is, if I may jump in.
Yeah.
The mall has a number of special licenses that are dedicated to just the mall.
Mm-hmm.
And this one Basido license is the last available for all the rest of the town.
Right.
We would like the mall to use up the special licenses that they applied for and received before we use up the Basido in case someone else wants to open a restaurant and ask for liquor license around town.
Right, I understand that part of it, but the application that's in front of you is just for a transfer. So that's what you need to act on tonight and hear from the applicant on. So you can't make them apply for a different license. Yeah, that's part of the conversation, obviously. You can ask that question, find out what their position is on it and explore that. But if you're asking, can you not act on the application in front of you and request that they then make use of or apply for the outstanding license, that's the applicant's decision. So I think what you need to do is hear from the other members, from the subcommittee, hear the rest of the public hearing
Yep.
and see where you want to go with this before, before tackling that issue.
I'll get to Mr. Priest shortly. Anything else in the subcommittee? Mr. Hogan, anything additional?
My position on this is the same as the previous application that came before us a couple of weeks ago. And we're going to have to have some conversation. So I wouldn't be ready to respond to this tonight at all.
Thank you. Mr. Priest?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Something I'm hoping to get clarity on, to whoever can answer this question, is who currently holds the Basido license?
Mr. Vaughn?
Yeah, no, the license is technically the name of Basido, but Basido closed, as you know. So they entered into a lease termination agreement with Simon. And as part of that, it was an agreement that the license would stay at the mall. It's a valuable asset for the mall. I think it was, you know, purchased at the time for, you know, maybe close to $200,000, I think, when Basido originally went in there. So, you know, the mall is looking to, you know, not lose a license that it already had. And I certainly understand full well that there are site-specific licenses that were granted by Town Meeting for the mall, which, as I mentioned before, they are being used. I mean, we've used the majority of the licenses that were granted by Town Meeting back in, you know, the 2018, between Parm, Common Craft, Fogo, Shake Shack, Guaikaku. I know there's another restaurant deal that's in the works now. So the intent is to use all those, but I know I'm kind of wandering off the reservation with your question. But, but the, that's where the license is now. So, and I guess the, the issue that, with, and I know the town has indicated before that it's not looking to revoke the Basido license, but instead to use it once the site-specific licenses are used. But I guess the issue that we're running into as it relates to the Basido space is that I'm not, I don't think there's a way for the site-specific license to go for the Basido space and the Basido license to remain at the same time. So that's what...
All right, Town Council?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, just offer a comment specifically in response to your question, sir. So Basido was dissolved by Secretary of the Commonwealth. So as of 2018, I believe it was, June 30th, 2018. So that company is, doesn't exist in Massachusetts. So one of the discrepancies, just sort of on the face of the application, is that question itself. So in order to have a transferee, you need a transferor. So we haven't gotten to that. I don't want to get ahead of your process here, but I just wanted to add some clarification on that point. And if I may just offer one last comment on what I just heard. That's true, you can't have two licenses, you know, governing the same spot, but there's a simple solution to that. If you have a new license application for a new premises or essentially the same, you know, footprint of the premises, you have the outstanding, you know, public hearing going on, the revocation. So one can be applied for while one is canceled out, then you don't have two licenses for the same spot. So, I mean, that's a process thing that you can resolve pretty readily. So you wouldn't obviously issue two licenses or have two simultaneously, but one can go back in the stable while you consider whether or not you want to issue another one out of that same stable. So that's something you can remedy.
Thank you, Mr. Winter. Mr. Priest, follow up? Where's the physical license, I think, the question was?
Well, not that. So much as I mean to Mr. Winter's point, right, is that there's no transferer. Right? It was, it was bargained with Simon to, as a part of the deal, which, I mean, was the town notified of this? Is that okay? Like, that's my larger question here is like, I mean, sure, you know, if, if from a license standpoint, everything matches up and we have to transfer it, you know, I mean, am I going to quabble? Not really. My bigger question is, who's got the license? You know, like, I don't, I don't recall ever having this conversation, you know, and being involved as the Alcohol Licensing Authority, that this was, this was happening as a deal that was happening as Basido was being dissolved and Simon was taking over the license. If that's the case, right? Because if that was the case, then Simon should have requested a transfer of that license from Basido to themselves, which, as far as I know, did not happen. So I'm confused on that piece.
Mr. Vaughn, did you ever...
No, I, I think that there was notification sent by Basido back in, I'm looking at it, September of 2019, where to the, to the board, through Mr. Sagarino, that they entered into a lease termination agreement with the landlord to transfer the license to a new restaurant operator at the Burlington Mall to be identified by the, by the landlord. So...
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn.
Yeah.
Mr. Vaughn, I have a quick question. Can Basido transfer that license to the mall? Or is it our authority to transfer it?
So what I've seen in the application is a contract, civil arrangement between two private parties. There's nothing under Chapter 138 that makes that binding on the board. Any applicant, if they want a new license, if they want a transfer license, has to come to this board. So...
Yeah, I would...
As far as a contractual arrangement goes, you know, I have no comment on the validity of the contract, but in terms of whether or not it effectuates a license transfer under 138, no. They, they need a vote of this board to do that.
Vaughn?
No, I don't disagree. I mean, any transfer needs to be approved by the board, so...
I may be wrong, but just clarify. So it sounds like there's some sort of mistake made two years ago?
I wouldn't necessarily characterize it, but whatever arrangements were made outside of this board have no binding effect on this board. Whether or not they entered into a contract saying, we will transfer it, we promise to transfer it. When this, that, and the other thing happens, that has nothing to do with this board. The only process to transfer is to apply and get an approval by this board. And that didn't happen, as far as I understand.
I'll let Mike go first.
Mr. Runyon?
Interesting, interesting comments and questions tonight, but let me just go outside the box a little bit. With the, obviously, the restaurant industry has, we've seen over the years, has proven to be a benefit to the, to the town here. Should we, and seeing as though we don't have any licenses other than the Basido's license, should we, in addition to negotiating, you know, with Simon right now, should we be discussing whether or not do we need another half a dozen licenses for the community? Question for another day, but I thought I'd bring it up tonight. But other than that, no. I'll, I'm going to continue to listen to this evening.
Mr. Morandi?
I don't, I don't disagree with you at all. I think at some point, we need to have a discussion about all licenses. All I have is right now, every week, or every week, I shouldn't say every week. Every time there's a license at the mall, I always want to use that specific license. We've said 100 times, can you please use another license? And if it comes up to the end, I've said it before, it comes up to the end of it, we'll give you the license. But right now, if a restaurant opens, I don't understand what the mall issue is. And don't take this to... what the mall issue is, and don't take this the wrong way, because we want your restaurant.
I'm coming. Coming either way.
I'm so happy when we finally changed it and they, they got the license they want. But I don't understand what makes the mall think that we're gonna change our position on this because of where it is.
It's a lot of leverage. Um, these are partnership leases with the mall that we don't have. And, you know, for example, in the Seaport, that's an outright lease, that profit is ours, right? So, so a lot of the leverage to go into the mall is it's a joint partnership. So, and, and for someone who closed nine restaurants during COVID, I can tell you it is pretty common in restaurants when you end a lease to turn your liquor license over to the landlord. Um, now, the board doesn't have to acknowledge that anywhere, and that's probably not a binding thing, but that's just a common practice. So maybe Basido did that because they closed a lot of restaurants, unfortunately. Uh, so they probably, as part of their exit strategy, did that. Um, ideally, obviously, you know, this is the, the best-case scenario for our restaurant group moving forward for a magnitude of reasons, and the fear that, that we have is that if we file for this license, we're not able to get it. But it doesn't discourage us, and we're coming either way. I'm excited to come back to Burlington. Just, and there's, there's a really practical, smart way to do this so that the restaurant can hit the ground running and be successful, and then there's a harder challenge.
So I'll say this, there's a very easy way to do it. Tell the mall to give you that license, we'll come in here, you walk in this room, every one of us will say yes, and we'll be happy we still have our license for the rest of the town, and it's all. If the next one comes in, we're gonna do the same thing. Until that license is either used by someone over here, and maybe in that meantime, we can apply for more licenses, like Mr. Runyon said, and we could try to get those more, but that specific license, I think myself and Mr. Hogan, I'm probably talking out of turn, I should talk for everybody else, but that license is for the rest of the town, and that's what we want to see. If it happens, we can use it.
Thank you, Mr. Randy. I'm not sure if you saw what happened with the last restaurant, Fogo de Chao. That's exactly what happened, is we had to continue, continued, and the minute it was, they made the decision to apply for a mall-specific license, 10 minutes, tops, to approve it.
Yeah.
So.
And, and I don't want the board to think, look, I'm, you know, obviously I was following, I di- I wasn't representing Fogo directly on that. They had their own counsel on that, but I was, you know, it, it is part of the conversation on behalf of Simon. But, uh, you, you, you know, the only, well, the big difference here, the nuance, is that it, it's the same exact location where the Basido license technically exists. So I don't want you to think that, jeez, why didn't you listen to me last time while you're coming back? That, that's the, that's the distinction here, which I think is an important one, which really, um, was the reason why we, we filed for the transfer. Because again, it's very similar to, you know, when, when Uno's transferred to Karma, it was the same thing. And that was after the town had approved all the site-specific licenses too. So we're just trying to be mindful of that. But, um, so, you know, look, I mean, these folks want to open up, um, the first quarter of, is it?
February.
February of, um, '22. Um, so I'm not sure we're gonna get a resolution on it tonight, um, but I'm not sure how the, how the board feels about it, but.
Um.
Well, I imagine we're gonna have to continue it.
All right. Well, that was my question, um.
Can I ask a que- on, on the continue, if you are going to, um, and I did reach out to Lisa Mead last week, but, but, because I was at the subcommittee meeting where that question came up about the, what does this mean for the license and all that. Um, so, I, if it's possible, perhaps, to continue to the October 25th meeting, that would at least allow us an opportunity to communicate and figure out how we're gonna proceed for that meeting. Um, if that's okay with the board.
How's the 25th looking, uh, the agenda?
Well, can I have a, I, I, I wanna have a question with Mark. Mark, I know you're the attorney and you're not the mall. Um, but I, I, I don't see the distinction that just because Basido was in part of that site location, that that locks it in to get that license. It's a license in a spot. And you've asked the mall to cooperate on this one thing, and they refuse to do it.
No, they're not refusing to do a bar.
Yes, Mark, they are.
Well, respectfully, I think what, the, the message that came back before is that use the site-specific licenses first. We're not gonna revoke the Basido one. I- if it, if it's there, once you use all the site-specific ones, then use it. So the, the predicament that we're in is that technically, from the ABCC's perspective, and I don't know if you feel differently, um, counsel for the town, but i- is that the, the licensed premises is the Basido space, technically. So, if we, and I, I think that's where it gets into, if we apply for a site-specific license for that same space, then technically, there's two licenses that are designated. I don't know what we do with this license, and this is why I spoke to.
Same thing we did last week, or last month. We, we, we just, we continued it, and somebody at the mall said, well, let's give them the other one, we'll reapply. And that's how they got the site-specific. And that's the same thing that can happen here. If, if you're running out of licenses, then very quickly, you're gonna get to the end of the line, and the Basido license is gonna be available to you. But we still have licenses available because we haven't approved them all. We know that there are still some sitting out there.
There are, and, you know, look, I'm not to beat a dead horse, but I've been before you before, and I've made the argument that the intention is to utilize all these as part of the redevelopment of the mall property. Um, you know, I think when we were before Town Meeting to get those site-specific licenses, there was never any statement made or intention that, all right, well, as soon as, i- if a restaurant that doesn't have a site-specific license goes out, then you're gonna be giving that one back to the town, and you're gonna use. So, I, y- y- you know, the, 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 the future of this mall is going to be the ability to utilize those licenses in a manner that's consistent with how you're seeing the evolution of retail right now. Um, in terms of, of restaurants, and restaurants with some entertainment component becoming the, the drivers of foot traffic and, and everything else. So, um, so I, th- that's the only thing we're struggling with a little bit, Bob, is the, uh, the issue of having the, uh, two licenses technically attached to the same licensed space. But, um, if I could, I mean, I, I guess I would request if we could, uh, just continue it to the, the 25th. Maybe, um, we would have an opportunity to communicate with, with Town Council between now and then.
Before we talk about that, Mr. Randy?
I was just gonna ask, Mr. Dinesio, how, wh- what does it take for us to go apply for more licenses?
Um, I'm not sure.
You'd have to start with Town Meeting.
Yeah, special legislation through Town Meeting, I believe.
That's right.
Hold on, uh, Mr. Winnet, can you answer that?
Yes, that's right. You'd have to get special legislation to do that at this point.
And you know, I, I, look, I'm not, I'm not saying anything the board isn't aware of already, but we're, we're not the only spot that has licenses available, as you know, right? I mean, the Town Center, I think, has eight licenses that are available that haven't been used yet. So there's opportunity there for someone to locate if they, if they chose. Um, I want to say Third Ave still has a license available as well from the special legislation that was granted before there. But, um, it's not as if this is the only location where, you know, there's licenses.
It looks like we need to do some homework on, on both ends on this?
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Priest.
Sorry, it's, because this is a public hearing, is anybody who's out in computer land who wants to say anything?
All right. Is there anybody on the public that wants to offer a comment or question regarding this item? Mr. Dinesio?
There are two call-in users, so we may want to remind them to, um.
Star, was it star three?
Star three.
All right, any call-in users, to raise your hand, hit star three on the phone. And we have no questions from the public?
Why, why are you doing that, Mr. Chairman? I have one quick question about the outside seating. Is this hall covered in? So if somebody's sitting under there and it's raining, they're covered, they're protected from the rain?
They are.
All right, that's.
It's gonna be a, be a pergola, Bob, but there would be a retractable awning that would go over the pergola for, okay, protect people from the elements if and when needed. Um.
And, because the outdoor seating has become so important to everybody that they, they enjoy it now, being out there.
Yeah, in all the new locations, we, we sourced a, a really great, um, Mancini and Duff, which has done a lot of the restaurants in Burlington, um, and a lot of our restaurants in the pu- in the past. Um, really beautiful design where it's a permanent structure, but it's retractable. Um, so, it's, it's nice.
They, they don't need me to give them a plug, but, um, the tavern did a great job with their outdoor seating on that patio, and they've been getting a lot of use from a lot of people, um, who still are not comfortable sitting inside. And that outdoor seating is just constantly in use.
Yeah.
Looks like we were, uh, this is probably gonna get continued, the question is to when? Do I have any motion to continue this? And if we do, when would that be?
Uh, yeah, I'll make the motion that we continue this to October 25th. Uh, I don't know if we have a time.
On or after 6:30?
Yeah, so I had, at or after 6:30.
All right. It's moved in second to continue this item, um, item 271 to October 25th meeting on or after 6:30 PM. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, abstain. Five zero zero, continue this hearing.
Thank you so much.
Okay, uh, reverting back to item 270, the continued all alcohol-seated restaurants, uh, Burlington LLC. Mr. Vaughn?
Well, I, I, I think this was just something that you had put on your agenda, um, similar to the, uh, the prior one.
I will make the motion that we continue this one also.
Okay.
Just, just for an update. I, I guess the update is what I just told on everyone.
All right, so, so the same night as the one we just discussed?
Yes.
So it's been moved in second to move item 27, uh, continue item 270 to October 25th?
Do we, do we need to technically open this and just, and just continue it, or?
Continue, yeah. Okay. Then moved in, uh, second to continue item 270 to October 25th on or after 6:30 PM? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain. Five zero zero.
Great. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Mark.
All right, thank you.
Okay, item, uh, 272, Sculpture Park. Mr. Priest?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So a little bit more fun. Uh, so again, uh, we have a, another donation this time in the way of, uh, uplighting for the sculptures. Um, and so, uh, Bognavola, um, runs a landscaping and, uh, irrigation company, uh, does lighting as well, and has offered to donate, uh, uplighting for all the sculptures. The logistics around that, I have not had a chance to connect with Mr. Navola on. Uh, so, you know, in terms of them being on timer, power coming from Grammy, things like that, I want to connect on. Uh, but obviously, I wanted to have that discussion, uh, this evening.
Okay. This is, uh, just discussion, we're not, we don't have to prove this, correct?
Correct.
All right, does anybody want, Mr. Randy?
So I would think that, um, without getting into lengthy, lengthy discussion on this, uh, we need to talk to him and find out what kind of lights are going in, how many lumens they gotta be, who's gonna power them, where the plug is. I don't know if the, I know they did the, the common over a few years ago with electricity, but I don't know if they've done that over that side there, so I don't know what's there for electric. I think those are the things we need to find out, and then once you find them, I'll bring it back and, uh, discussion to go on.
Would it be prudent to, I'm sorry, Mr. Randy, would it be prudent to have Mr. Navola come here to, to, um, give us those answers, or do you think?
Just, that'd be a subcommittee issue.
Subcommittee?
Yeah, yeah, we can, I can connect him.
Uh, I, I do have a.
Yes, Mr. Hogan?
Um. Please refresh my memory. Um, this is not a permanent site for these items. We're putting lights in for something that's might be coming up at a certain point, because the historical commission has its sites on it also. Um, is there gonna be any issues with that? And I, I just throw the question out because I don't know what specific question to ask.
Mr. Dinesio?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, but, um, I'm, I'm not sure about the answer for that, but I did want to point out that call-in user three has their hand up, and it may be.
It could be Barbara, yeah.
It could be Barbara.
All right, call-in user, with your hand up, please identify yourself.
Can you unmute them or not? Uh, star six.
Star six. Star six.
While we're waiting, I mean, that, that landscape lighting is usually typically that low voltage stuff to wire, you know, underground conduit and, uh, well, it's required for us for our 911 orals.
Well, it's not low voltage lighting. It's just stuff to go on, on off or whatever.
Do we, uh, have a, uh?
Probably batteries.
Call-in user with their hand up. Star six to unmute?
Hi, everybody. I'm sorry, this is Barbara. I didn't realize I was muted. Um, I do have an answer for that question.
Okay, Barbara, go ahead.
Obviously, we are, okay, thanks. Uh, we are aware that this is not a p- permanent installation. So I did ask Mr. Navolo about, um, putting in lighting for item, for artwork that is not necessarily going to be there permanently. And what he explained to me is that the wires that would be put in would be just beneath the surface of the grass, far enough that it would not interfere with mowing or anything like that, but very easy to remove when the time came that they needed to be, or even to just be moved from one sculpture to another. Does that help?
That's fine, yeah.
Great, thank you, Barbara.
Okay. Um, if you have any other questions, I will be here.
Anything additional, uh? Just to get your expression.
Yeah, so just for, for this particular item, no, that's, that's what we're talking about.
And what's the timeframe on this? What's the, the expanded time on this?
For the park?
Yeah.
I believe it's, uh, until September of next year, if I recall.
I think so. Hold on, uh, just a point of order, Mr. Dinesio, we all set with Town Council?
Yes.
I'm here at your pleasure, not the other way around, so it's up to you.
All right.
But if you, uh, if you're all set with me?
We're all set.
Unless you want to talk about this.
Don't mind heading back out now. I like hearing about this stuff. Lot going on here that I might like to visit. All right, thank you, everyone. Good evening, then.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Priest, anything else before we move on?
No, that's everything right now. Thank you.
Thank you for that update, Barbara and Mr. Priest. Uh, item 273 is not gonna be an approval. It's gonna talk. It's gonna be an update because the documentation is not ready yet, the final draft. And we have, uh, a proponent here. If you just identify yourself for the record.
Good evening, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, for the record, Robert Buckley, Reuben Voronstein. Uh, this relates to the, what is called the Affordable Housing Restriction Agreement, uh, which would be, uh, required for the Fourth Avenue's, uh, age-restricted or age-targeted housing that Nord Bloom is developing. Um, I'd strike that, it's age-targeted, um, but it's affordable housing. Um, there were two components to this. The first section was the marketing material, the Town Meeting and the Selectmen appointed a, a committee to review the materials and these, and the template of going out and, and marketing these units. That was approved a few months ago by that commission. Uh, the second part is the Affordable Housing Restriction Agre- Agreement, uh, which would be recorded with the Registry of Deeds, which will govern the, um, use and occupation of the units and establish the units and essentially, uh, protect the integrity of the units on a going-forward basis. It's a deed restriction. Um, because this is not a state, uh, program through the Department of Housing and Community Development, um, it's a local agreement, um, and we used as a template, uh, the state, um, agreement in terms of the restrictions and the procedures, uh, with, with a few caveats to it to reflect the transaction that's being contemplated. Uh, I've worked with, uh, Town Council, Lisa Mead, on the review and comments on it. And I believe as of last week, uh, I saw her final comments, and I was, we were, my client was, uh, agreeable to those. Um, so now it is a question of putting it into final execution form.
Thank you, Mr. Buckley. Uh, I'll start with this, and Mr. Runyon?
Um, yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, this is a, this was a, uh, sort of a joint, um, Town Meeting Planning Board, um, proposal. Uh, this board did not take a position on this. Um, but my understanding is, as the executive branch, we must execute the.
As a restriction agreement, which binds the property.
Right, right. Um, I know the, so the, uh, Northwest Park Committee had met numerous occasions, um, uh, Nord Bloom had, uh, paid for a consultant for the group to help guide them through the process. Um, there was some spirited discussions at times, um, pertaining to fair housing laws. And, um, so, uh, you know, what was, uh, uh, explained at Town Meeting was, was that it would be for Burlington residents only and Burlington of a certain age. Um, it really, to not run afoul of the law, um, that, you know, it can't be that way. So it's a little different than the, uh, original proposal, um, that was presented at Town Meeting. Um, but anyhow, it's our, our job. Uh, but anyhow, it's our, our job to approve the agreement, and what I've read in the agreements is pretty consistent with what the, uh, Northwest Park Committee, um, is expecting.
Mr. Chairman, could I make a comment on that?
Mr. Buckley?
Um, yes, we, we have to be very cognizant of both federal and state, uh, fair housing acts and, uh, laws and regulations. Uh, we are allowed, uh, under both to devise a local preference, to, that's why I was saying age targeted, and we have, uh, through the marketing materials as well as embodied in this agreement is the, uh, local preference, uh, concept. Um, and, um, so in some respects, what was presented to town meeting was a statement that it would, it would comply with federal and state housing, um, uh, laws and regulations, which is what we did in, uh, through town council, uh, we hope we've made sure of that, so. I think it's a, it's a very innovative program, and I think that this just binds the property so that, um, once this goes on, this goes on prior to, and any financing is subject to this, so that, uh, once this goes on, the, uh, the, I believe it's twenty, twenty-three units will become, um, uh, income or, uh, affordable, um, in, uh, in accordance with the agreement.
Yeah, th- this concept is slightly different than anything we've, we've, we've seen in town previously. The, the, the idea was to attempt to qualify residents who don't currently qualify at the, the eighty percent income threshold, we bump that up to one hundred percent of, uh, area median, median income, uh, hopefully to accommodate, uh, a larger sign of the population is looking for housing.
Thank you, Mr. Runyon.
One, one other comment, that's a good point, Mike, um, the town sets the parameters for the qualification. Um, and, and I think that's a unique aspect of it. Um, you will look at your needs and, and you can set the qualifications as to who qualifies, what, what you look at. This document makes sure that the owner of the property, who has to monitor on an annual basis, that those individuals occupying those units meet your qualifications. So the monitoring obligation is, this document spells it out, and the, the owner or the operator of the site acts as the monitoring agent to do that and to certify to the town that of the twenty-three units, they have to, they have to provide annual income data, uh, or whatever your criteria are, and that there's a report to the town every year as to qualifications.
Thank you, Mr. Buckley. Mr. Runyon, anything further?
No, nothing further.
Mr. Marandy?
And Mr. Chairman, I don't mean to jump in, but while we're on this one issue, if I could just ask the question, so I don't lose it. It was voted on at town meeting using certain wordage, and then you said there was a discussion with legal counsel about whether that was accurate or not.
Oh, no, no, the, the words, if you look at the zoning, I, I, I apologize if, if that was how it was interpreted, no. I, what I wanted to say was that at town meeting, the vote was that it would be age targeted, senior age targeted, local preference to the extent permitted by federal and state, uh, it's right in the warrant article, uh, 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 housing, uh, acts.
So there's no question, no issue, um, that someone might, that someone might say, well, that's not what I voted on?
No, I, I, I think it would be a stretch to say that because we, we're in compliance.
I just want to make sure that if there was an agreement that that was okay by a couple of people, and we don't know about it, but we vote on it, are we gonna get our butts in a bind?
The, the one thing you've been, i- i- in, in many respects, it's exactly the same you would have on a forty-B or a age, uh, a, uh, income restricted project that's done through the state programs, uh, Department of Housing, Community Development. The one criteria, the one difference here that you have is that you set the parameters because you're not doing it through the state program, you can look at what are the income levels, what are the asset levels, what are you counting, what are you not counting? So you come up with the criteria as to how does someone qualify, and I think Mike alluded to that, or maybe it was Jim that was saying that you may have one hundred and ten percent of the eighty, of the statu-, of the, uh, census tract for someone to qualify, or this asset wouldn't be counted, and so you'll set the parameters for those that work, uh, in the town, and that's the only difference.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, Mr. Hogan, anything else?
I'm all set, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Marandy?
No, nothing right now, thank you.
Mr. Priest?
Uh, no, thank you.
Um, no, I have nothing at this point, I'm just looking for, uh, Mr. Buckley, anything further before?
Yeah, I think that, uh, as I said, town council, my last conversation with town council was that, that we, the changes that she suggested were appropriate, I thought, and clarifying, and, um, that we just have to put it in final execution form, we have to put the exhibits on to identify the units, uh, that's the biggest issue, um, and, uh, uh, get the name of the entity that will be the operator correct.
So we're gonna continue this?
Right.
Um, October twenty-fifth or November?
Uh, October twenty-fifth would be desired.
So that being said, I'll be looking for a motion to continue, uh, no, we don't have to, we don't, we don't have to continue it, that's right.
Right.
So we'll, we'll continue this matter.
Very good.
Thank you.
I want to, I want to thank everyone who participated, particularly the, the committee from the, that the selectmen approved, and a number of the selectmen, we've had some discussions, as well as the town staff. It's an innovative program, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buckley.
Thank you, Mr. Buckley.
Item two seventy-four is the Leahy Clinic Medical, uh, Leahy Clinic Medical Center pilot renewal payment in lieu of taxes. Mr. Dinesio?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, you may remember that around this time last year, we were here, um, to extend for one year Leahy's pilot agreement. Uh, and, and in twenty-twenty, the latest ten-year agreement with Leahy for a pilot, which is a payment in lieu of taxes, uh, expired after ten years. We started negotiation on an extension, and COVID hit, uh, we were able to be able to, uh, uh, to come to an agreement to do it for one year, and in last year, um, the agreement more spelled, or better spelled out, what the earmark sort of, what we were gonna be using the money for, in theory, nothing changed logistically for us other than we'll be getting the money in two, um, lumps instead of just one payment. We'll get some in the fall and some in the spring, which isn't an issue for us, and helps Leahy out. Um, the, the memo in your backup outlined the dollar amount, which is five hundred and fifty thousand, it's made up in two pieces, five hundred and twenty thousand, which has been the agreement for many years now, and then an extra thirty thousand dollars, which they do annually, usually a lot more than that, uh, for tip, for, uh, community benefits type events that they sponsor each year. You remember last year that we called out what we were gonna use the money for in order to qualify as community benefits for Leahy in their state requirements to earmark that money, uh, for, for what they are, they're, they're listed in your agreement. This agreement is for an additional three years. Last year, as I said, was for one year, this just extends it to another three years. Uh, so it's great that we were able to come to an agreement, a multi-year agreement, which continues that benefit and doesn't, uh, create a half a million dollar hole in our budget, so, spread.
Good news. Thank you, Mr. Dinesio, um, Mr. Runyon?
Uh, no, no, it looks fine, I'm happy to, Leahy's been a, Leahy's a great neighbor for many, many years here. Um, I'm satisfied with the agreement that the administration has worked out.
Mr. Marandy?
No, nothing, thank you.
Mr. Priest?
I just, again, want to, want to thank Leahy for being a good, uh, corporate partner and neighbor. Um, you know, and I think that what is outlined here, uh, makes great sense in our absolutely areas of need. Um, you know, and like John, you said, you know, that's, that's money that doesn't come out of our, you know, that's, that's them helping us, which is, which is fantastic.
Thank you, Mr. Priest. Mr. Hogan?
Oh, I'm very good, man.
And I've got nothing on this as well, I just want to thank Leahy for being part of our community and a, a great neighbor. That being said, I'll be looking for a, a motion to approve the renewal of the Leahy Clinic Medical Center pilot.
Yeah, I, yeah, why's that, why me? But anyhow, yeah, Mr. Chairman, uh, I-
A time issue, Mike, I'm sorry.
I, I moved to accept and continue for the, for an additional three years the voluntary pilot payment program in community benefit programs as described.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain? Five zero zero. Item two seventy-five is, I think it's a true-pronged agenda item. Uh, General Walker Estates Amendments to the Easement and Covenant, Mr. Dinesio?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In your packet, there was a lengthy document from Lisa Mead, which was nicely summarized in a one-page memo for us, uh, which she outlined that this is more of a housekeeping matter, that the planning board has already approved this. Um, what happened is the, when the subdivision was laid out in two thousand nineteen, a road exists that also had accepted drainage easements and a set of covenants for the subdivision. Now that the, uh, that the subdivision has changed and been approved, we need to essentially release those, uh, the easement and the covenant, uh, as the road no longer exists. So, uh, synopsis of quite a lengthy document, and, and attorney me did provide the two motions that we need to vote on tonight.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dinesio. Mr. Hogan, any questions? Mr. Priest?
Uh, no.
Mr. Marandy?
No, uh.
Mr. Runyon?
I, I do, actually, more of a statement than a question. So you, you, you mentioned that this is a very lengthy document, and town council has put in a ton of time at considerable expense, I presume, how the heck does that happen? How is this, you know, how is it that this thing's been a problematic development for three or four or five years now? And, uh, and, uh, you know, we're paying to fix it essentially, um, you know, through, through our, our town council. Um, I hope it's a one-time thing and we don't see this, this again. Um, really not our responsibility to be, to be taking care of this, these matters. Um, I know the property changed hands a couple of times and so on and so forth, but kind of discouraging to me that, uh, it, it, it's, it's taken this long to resolve the whole thing, and, and at, and at considerable additional expense, and took to us especially, so, that's it, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Runyon. Okay, uh, being, I got nothing, so, um, we need to do two motions on this. Do I have anybody who wants to read the suggested motion from town council? Uh, the first motion?
I'll make it. I move to approve the First Amendment of Declaration of Covenants, Restrictions and Easements related to General Walker Estates and to authorize town council to execute same on behalf of the board.
Okay, do I have a second? Alright, moved in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain? Five zero zero on the first motion, and we have a second suggested motion from town council.
I'll do it. I, I move to approve the First Amendment of Drainage Easement, General Walker Estates, Burlington, Mass., and to authorize town council to execute same on behalf of the board.
Do I have a second? It's moved in seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain? Five zero zero on the second motion. Okay, item two seventy-six, and we got a couple of appointments to some boards, uh, Mr. Dinesio? You want to, uh, take the first one, the Board of Appeals?
Uh, sure, in the, uh, Board of Appeals, we've had, uh, over the past several months, we've had two resignations. What the, what the approval tonight is for, to move one of the ultimate, alternate members, Mr. Courier, into a full voting member spot, and for his term to end in twenty twenty-four, so we continue to have the staggered ending terms, uh, and we have advertised for both Mr. Sheridan and Ms. Tegus' position, uh, as alternate members, so that's ongoing, and tonight is to just, uh, to make that appointment for-
Thank, thank you, Mr. Dinesio. That's a board appointment, correct?
Correct.
Alright, so we'll need to nominate, uh, make the motion to approve, um, Mr. Courier for the Board of Appeals, the full member status, hoping.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Sorry, I got no.
Alright, all those in favor of Mr. Courier for the Board of Appeals?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain? Five zero zero on that. Okay, uh, we're gonna go to Transportation Committee. Mr. Priest?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, so, uh, out of the gate, just, uh, one minor correction to what you're looking at. You see, uh, on the list of names, uh, one of the at-large residents, uh, that name is incorrect. The application that was provided in the backup is correct, uh, so it's not Daryl Intress, it'll be Jeremy Harrington. Um, so, just want to thank all of the boards and committees that, uh, you know, volunteered to be a part of this. Uh, I know that we're working through some stuff with the council on aging, uh, board, um, and so for the time being, we won't be appointing a seat to that. Mark McDonald will be playing a bit of a role to help, you know, keep communication and conversation alive. Uh, but you'll see before you that we have Catherine Bond from the school committee, uh, we have Melissa Interess from Youth and Family Services, uh, board, we have Ernie Cavino from planning, Rick Parker as our B A C C representative, uh, and then our two at-large seats, Melissa Zardo and then Jeremy Harrington, both residents, uh, both, uh, actually active parents, um, and, uh, both very enthusiastic, uh, and actually Jeremy's, uh, role actually involves operations logistics, uh, so I think it'd be very helpful when it comes to talking about something like transportation and all of the moving parts and pieces. So, yeah, that's, that's pretty what we have before you for, uh, this new Transportation Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Priest. Any discussion on this? Okay, we'll take a motion to approve all, as stated by Mr. Priest, not as in the material, but as stated by Mr. Priest.
For who?
There's a second.
Okay.
All those in favor of the Transit- Transportation Committee?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain? Five zero zero. Okay, minutes from the Alcohol Subcommittee from September twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one?
So moved.
Is there a second? All those, uh, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain? Five zero zero on the minutes. Um, any subcommittee reports, Michael?
Uh, yes, briefly, a couple, a couple of items, uh, Mr. Chairman. Um, first of all, I'd like to recognize, uh, Ernie Cavino, who has served on our Housing Partnership Committee for, for some thirty years now. Uh, he's offered his resignation, um, as the planning board representative to that group, uh, and I'm pleased to announce that Barbara LaRue has, um, offered to take, uh, his place there. But I, I really want to thank Ernie for all the time he's put in, not only with, with this committee, but his time with Planning Board, Master Plan, um, just so many, so many hours that he's given back to the community, and I, I just want to recognize him for, for all of his, uh, efforts here, uh, in Burlington for the people of Burlington, so, thank you.
And with family.
And with family, yeah, she was a shining worker for, for volunteer for many, many, many years as well, so, yeah, great family. And, uh, I appreciate his, his, his time and his expertise was invaluable to the Housing Committee. Uh, secondly, just quick note, uh, Pumpkin Patch is, uh, back in business this year at St. Mark's Church. Uh, they're open Monday through Saturday, I believe, um, I'll be there next Tuesday, um, from twelve to six, uh, there are still a couple of dates, uh, that aren't filled yet at the Pumpkin Patch, uh, for volunteers, so if anybody has, uh, an afternoon and could volunteer, um, you could reach out through the, uh, St. Mark's Church or the, uh, People Helping People program, who benefits from this, uh, the pumpkin sales. It's one of the, one of the largest fundraisers, uh, of the season, so, it's a lot of fun, so they make it a lot of fun for the kids, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Do I have anything?
Um, just, happy season, happy season, October fourth, which was today, opened up archery, so if you're at the Landmark Forest and you see someone in there with a bow and arrow, don't be shocked, they have the right to be in there, as long as they have a little tag, um, that's about it.
Thank you, Mr. Marandy. Mr. Priest?
Uh, thanks, Chairman, uh, two quick things, uh, one, uh, so we had received a, uh, a grant, uh, for communications efforts and endeavors, uh, and so I've been working, uh, with Whitney Haskell and Paul and John, uh, to figure out how to best move forward with, uh, communications efforts. Uh, we've reached out to Colin Center, and, uh, they've just supplied back an initial report, uh, in terms of how we might proceed with that, uh, so looking to, uh, come back to this board at some point, some more information, some more actual, you know, factual things, but it's been an ongoing thing I've been working on. Uh, and then just as a, an update, uh, the Sculpture Park, uh, is aiming to hold an event at the Sculpture Park, uh, which is typically at Grandview, uh, so we cleared that through, uh, our office. Uh, on November sixth, uh, they're gonna have, uh, Red Trousers, they are a performance group, uh, as well as, um, I believe, uh, students, like, some, some band members and some coordinators might come, uh, and just put together a whole little- might come, uh, and just put together a whole little, uh, you know, event at the, at the park, uh, I know that Barbara has contacted, uh, everyone, already police fire, the whole brigade, uh, but, uh, I, I still need to confirm, John, I don't know, we haven't talked about this, if we actually need to approve this because it's at Grandview as opposed to the common, which we typically approve, uh, or if, you know, they just booked the space and time, and, you know, they're good to go.
Right, I, I think we decided that since it isn't the use of the common, that it doesn't need to be approved, it would just be a.
That's right.
A regular, uh, event at Grand.
Right, so, uh, I'll, I'll remind everyone again when we get closer, but, uh, it's shaping up to be a, a fun day.
Thank you, Mr. Priest, Mr. Hogan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, after our discussion here, uh, about the police station and the condition it's in and, uh, what's going on over there, and, and Rich's coverage of it also, uh, there's, there's a little bit of interest out there in, in finding out what's going on and where we're going with it, so John, I'm gonna ask again to put that timetable together for us, step by step as to what we do when, and, and then what do we do after that, just so we can start moving this forward.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan. Mr. Marandy forgot something?
I did forget, I, I just wanted to thank Mr. Priest and Mr. Tegus for dancing, I happened to see the video, uh, it was wonderful, thank you for the B cat, uh, I have never seen anything so beautiful in my whole life, I laugh so hard.
That's beautiful, Joe.
I can't, I just want to say.
It's beautiful in its own way, Jim.
Oh, yeah.
It was beautiful in a special kind of way, that's what I'm trying to say, it was very, very nice, thank you, thank you guys, thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Thanks for not showing up, Joe.
It's not gonna be your regular, um, subcommittee report at every meeting?
I might even ask the B cat to put it up one night for us before we start, there we go.
I'm not sure if we mentioned it to follow yet, but it was an unbelievable celebration sans the dancing, but, um, but, uh, it was well, well attended, very colorful, the weather was perfect, the, the clothing, the music, food, everything was phenomenal, it's a, it's another great, uh, event on the common, I have nothing else, Mr. Dinesio, anything?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I just want to, uh, take the opportunity, I know everybody shares the sentiment, but to, uh, I know he's, he's probably watching, so to wish Mr. Sagrado well in his, uh, recovery as he, as he gets better.
Thank you, get him dancing next year, um.
He's in the bed shaking right now, no way.
All right, um, do we have anything, any citizens time, anybody from citizens, uh, for citizens time? Nothing? Okay, that being the case, so, okay, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstaining, five zero zero, motion, meeting's adjourned.